Anytime, everybody. Can you go and make sure your cellphones are on silent? And please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Patty, would you read, take roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Woods.
Here, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Marino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pro Tem Lit.
Here.
Councilmember Morciano.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Wait for Mark. Mark, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Just one way for it. All right. Additions, deletions, modifications. Are there any additions, deletions, or anybody this evening? Chelsea, Mark, Rochelle, Maria?
No, sir.
Mark, you good? Okay. I actually have one. I'd like to reorder the agenda to have items for council action and discussion moved to following item six, city manager's report. Okay? Have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next is announcement presentation. I'd like to call Wendy Satori. Link to the podium, please. Hi, Wendy.
Hello.
You can take that off if you want.
I wasn't sure what the protocol is.
Yeah, we got lots of stuff.
Yeah, you're good.
Lots of stuff between me and you. So, well, thank you very much. I wanted to just come before you and see what I can answer for you, give you a little bit of an update on where we are with our elections. You know, we're in it now. Vote by mail ballots have gone out. And I know we have a lot of your residents and citizens who are going to be concerned about voting. So I thought we could just spend a couple of minutes giving you an update on what we're doing. So as I mentioned, vote by mail ballots have gone out. The initial drop, we've had over 300,000 ballots have been mailed. We're continuing to get more. I think we had a request for 3,000 of them came in today. So we know we'll continue having more and more come out. And those ballots, we often have people ask us, well, are they only going to be counted if nothing, if it's a close race? You know, do you save those until the end? And we wanted to let you know, and I know you all know, that of course not. You know, every ballot is going to be counted no matter what, but your vote by mail ballots are going to be in that early return. So when you get the very first returns right after seven, those include your vote by mail ballots that we've received up until Monday, through Monday night, as well as the early voting results. The ballots that we get in on Tuesday will be doing that processing throughout the day on Tuesday. So some of them may in fact be in the early results. Others will be later in the night as we continue to release results periodically. But we did want to let people know that those are going to be your early results. And then if you choose to do early voting, I'm sorry, if you choose to do vote by mail, a couple of things to know is we do have postage prepaid. So that's new this year, and it makes it very accessible and very easy for voters to do that because they don't have to go figure out what the postage is and try to find stamps for it. And you can also drop your ballot off if you don't want to drop it in the mailbox. You can drop it off at any one of our four offices. You can do at our main office until seven o'clock on election night, and you can do our outer offices until five o'clock on election night. And then you can also take it to any one of the early voting sites during early voting hours. We have 18 early voting sites. And so you can go August 3rd through August 16th. We'll be early voting. And from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And during those hours, you can go, you don't have to stand in a line. There's a separate line to just go and drop your vote by mail ballot in the box. So you get a lot of different ways for people to do that. As I said, early voting is certainly an option we have on our website. If people want to look at what the wait times are for early voting, they can go pull it up and look to see what we have for wait times. And they might decide to choose one over the other since we have 18 places to choose from. And the other thing you can do on our website, which is great, which is PBCelections.org, is it will show you in real time what the voter turnout is. So you can look at it by precinct. You can look at it by location. You can look at it a lot of different ways, by party. So however you want to manipulate that data, you can see in real time. It's updated every 15 minutes throughout the day. So since we had that ability with our new equipment, we wanted to share that with all of the voters as well. So that's something you can do. And then on election day, of course, you have to vote in your own precinct. And that's seven to seven. In terms of the COVID concerns that people have, you know, people ask me, well, will there be lines? You know, it's a presidential election coming up in November. I can assure you, yes, there will be lines in November. August, we don't typically have as many lines. So we may not have such a problem then. But you know, that's why we do have the vote by mail as an opportunity. But if you do decide you want to vote in person, we want you to know we're making it as safe as we possibly can. So all of the poll workers who are going to be there will have their temperatures taken in the morning with disposable thermometers. Then they'll also be filling out the health survey to make sure that there's no problems that we can know of. And then they'll all be having, all poll workers are required to wear masks. We're also providing them with those facial shields in addition if they choose to wear that. They will have gloves and hand sanitizer, as well as disinfecting wipes. We, for the voters, where all voters are going to be required to wear a mask because of the county executive orders, but unless they have a health reason not to. But if the voter does not bring their own mask, we will have a mask for them. So nobody will be denied the right to vote because they didn't have a mask. So we'll have a mask for those who need it. We will also have pens available that if they, can be single-use pens, so a voter is absolutely able to bring their own pen. But if they'd like to use one of ours, it'll be a single-use pen. They can take it with them if they want. And they, of course, will have hand sanitizer to wash their hands as they come in. If they want to use a glove because they choose to sign the EBIT, they don't want to hold the stick or the stylus. Or if they are concerned about using their finger, we will have a glove for the voter as well to use. So we've tried to do everything we can to make a voter feel safe when they go there. Those transparent shields that you see in a lot of the stores, we also have those. Those will be between the voters and the poll workers as well. So that with, of course, the social distancing, we'll have the tape in English and Spanish on the floor that says, you know, indicates every six feet. So with social distancing, if there are lines, it'll make them look longer, but we're going to try to do that. So with that, we're hoping that voters will feel confident going to the polls. And we're hoping that we'll have our poll workers feeling confident because that, of course, is a big concern of ours, is losing poll workers. And as, you know, people see numbers go up and they're concerned and they don't know exactly what we're doing to protect people, you know, we get a lot of calls and a lot of people saying that they don't want to be a poll worker now. So we are trying to let you know it is as safe as we can make it. And if you are inclined and you're not in that vulnerable category, we need you. So completely imploring everybody to please consider being a poll worker. And you can do a pre-registered or registered voter. So even voters who are 16 and 17, pre-registered voters can vote. So a lot of, we have some students who are looking for either some good pay or some community service hours. Reminder, too, that the poll workers are paid positions. They make for the election between $190 and $320 for the election, depending upon what position they have. So it's a good way to earn a little pocket money. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them for you.
Could you just mention about the adopt a precinct for nonprofits? Because I know a lot of our nonprofits are hurting right now. So if there's that much money that they can get.
Absolutely. So our adopt a precinct is another way that we're trying to be creative in how we can get new poll workers. So if there's an organization that has not taken a position on a candidate or an issue on the ballot, so that's the first thing that have to get passed, they can apply to be an adopt a precinct where that organization will come in and use their volunteers to staff the precinct. They'll go through the same poll worker training that all poll workers go through. They'll have the same requirements. Not everybody can be from the same party. Depending upon which location it is, it may require a Spanish speaker. But we can provide those things if we need that. But then what will happen is the group will be able to wear their shirts, promote themselves, and they will get the money that we would have paid. The poll worker will now go to the organization. So it's a great way for people to use their volunteers who maybe aren't able to use them right now because there's not as many things they can do. This is a good way they can do that. Organization makes the money, shows their pride. They're letting people know who they are. We provide a sign that says this precinct has been adopted by this group, but they can also provide their own signage.
And then the last thing about voting in honor of a veteran, I think it's worth mentioning as well.
I love that one. So, yeah, so voting in honor of a veteran is a way that we're trying to, again, connect with our community. So everybody who is a veteran or an active service man or woman is eligible to be on our wall of honor. We have a virtual wall of honor. It's a screen a little bit smaller than that size, but a big screen in our office right when you walk in that is scrolling all the time that shows veterans. And a lot of the veterans will send us their picture when they were in uniform, as well as their current picture today. And then whatever information they choose to share about themselves, we have that information. And so we're able to do that. It's also on our website. And once we're able to go to schools again, one of the things we're going to do is take that information, the pictures of the veterans and information about them with us to the school. So when we're trying to encourage people to register or pre-register, we can remind them that this opportunity that they have came because of sacrifices of other people. And that this is somebody that will say, perhaps when you go vote, you'd like to vote in honor of a veteran. And we'll give them the information about somebody. And then when they go to the polls, instead of getting a regular I voted sticker, they can ask for a veteran sticker. And it'll say, I voted in honor of a veteran with a place for you to put that person's name. So it's a way that we're trying to connect with the community and then also try to connect with our students as well.
Very nice. Any other questions? Mark, Rochelle?
Nope, I'm good. Thanks, Wendy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Maria?
Wendy, how are we doing with precincts? Are we 100%?
Oh, with our locations?
Yes.
So we have had only one governmental precinct or location had to close, and that's because it was being condemned up in Cota Questa. So we have a new location to replace that. We have had 15 locations that are private locations, a couple of churches, and we've had some churches, some temples. And then mostly, it's been the private clubhouse. So the residential clubhouse is where, although on one hand, it's their own residents who would be voting there, and so it would be a great service for them, they've made the determination that they don't want to open it for voting. So we have had to, some of those, we've been able to get some new school locations that are now available to us. So we've been able to replace them. And others, we have divided them up. And, you know, so we may have people going to different locations just so we can split them up to existing locations.
And how are you notifying your voters on that?
We are sending out new voter information cards and will also be putting it out in the newspaper.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. I have no questions, Wendy.
Okay.
And thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good job.
Good to you. Carl? Carl, before you go on, I'm having a hard time hearing Maria and Chelsea. I heard Wendy very well.
We'll just talk louder.
How's that work?
There you go. Thank you.
Is that better?
Chelsea?
Hello.
You good?
Thank you.
Better.
Better.
Okay. Next is comments from the public. And I do not have any comment cards for items that are not on the agenda. So we will move to the city manager report. Ron, do you have a report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. I have three items for your information. As you know, just about every day, I'm sending updates on our COVID-19 situation and run reports. I asked Fire Rescue to advance their Friday report to Thursday, and they dug in real deep and got the hospital situation reports a day early for you. Just got it this afternoon. At the Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center, they currently have 35 COVID-19 cases. They have 53 beds available and six ICU beds. And accumulation, they've had four deaths. The Jupiter Medical Center currently has 30 COVID-19 cases. They, there are 68 beds available and 10 ICU beds available. They have reported to date 23 deaths. The ALF and nursing homes in the city, we have nine of the total of 1,449 residents. Currently, there are 26 COVID-19 patients in and about those homes. So I just wanted to bring you up to date today about tomorrow's report. We're able to get it, and I appreciate Fire Rescue getting that information early. I know a lot of you like to have that information so you can disseminate it to the residents. So we'll be passing that along to you. And yesterday, they had, I think it was zero as far as the runs reports are concerned. So that varies from day to day, as you well know. The second thing that I would like to bring to your attention is I'd like to call Charlotte Przynski, our recreation leisure services director, to the podium to give you a very brief presentation of a special event for all of us.
Yes. And to my fellow parks and recreation professional where Ron started his career, thank you for allowing me this evening to share something with you. For the record, Charlotte Przynski, leisure services administrator. Every July, the National Recreation and Park Association celebrates Parks and Recreation Month. We have a video that we're going to show you this evening that celebrates the work of your staff. You're going to see the motto this year chosen by that national association is "We Are Parks and Recreation." They chose that specifically because the people in my field have been challenged, as everyone has, with the situation we're in and being called on to do different things in our community, just like your staff has with food drives and resident relief funds. People all across the country have called on their Parks and Rec team to do those things. There are words in the video that you're going to see that describe the heart and soul of the people that are in my profession. This video was put together, actually, more of an internal thing that we were going to share with our staff tomorrow so they could take pause to celebrate the things they do for the gardens community. Thank you to Mr. Ferris for allowing me to share it tonight. Before we go on, Eric, I do want to say that there are so many departments that help us. And we could not do what we do for this community without community services, engineering department, police, fire, finance, the clerk's office, HR, planning and zoning, and thank God for IT. Without them, we can't do what we do. And we're always in front of the camera, per se, and they're behind the scenes supporting us. So I want to thank them also. They're a key part to what we do for our community. But just want to share with you that video. It's about a minute and a half, and Eric's got it. Great job. Thank you for letting me share that.
Thank you, Charlotte. I know that you all feel the same way I do about our Parks and Recreation staff. And congratulations on Parks and Recreation Month and your commitment to this city.
Can we have a copy of that video?
Of course.
Okay.
Be our pleasure.
Thank you.
Also, at this time, would like to call to, here, let me find my paper. Call to the podium, our public media and relations manager, Candace Temple, and public media relations specialist, Madeline Marconi. Would you please come to the podium? Camera in hand. Mr. Mayor?
Guys, on behalf of myself and the vice mayor, I want to appreciate you two for going above and beyond, helping us on the state of the city. And we have a little writing and we have a commendation for your file. And I would like to read the commendation as we wrote it down. So it's in, "With deep appreciation that we write this commendation to both of you in recognition of your outstanding effort and professional conduct. You went above and beyond the call of duty on a project that never before attempted in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. Your video production of the 2020 State of the City was a huge success, largely due to your vigilance and determination. Needless to say that it was a challenge for both of us, but you were great coaches and innovators. As mayor.
And vice mayor.
Of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, we commend you both on a job well done. And we had a lot of fun, and it took two weeks just to get through the video part of it. But for you guys that don't know, we did it.
Some fits and starts.
Yeah, we did it right here in this room, and it was a mess.
With no power.
But as we got warmed up and the camera challenges and, you know, once the community, and I believe the corridor and the chamber, I think we kind of nailed it. So largely, I'm part of you. So anyway, I have a couple of these for you guys for your role.
While they're coming down, or either one of you or both of you have anything to say?
I know the communications department always has something to say. Just thank you. Very thoughtful, obviously unexpected. Madeline and I have been working as a team for about a little over a year now. And everything we do here is about teamwork. We certainly were just the facilitators of a great staff, awesome subject matter experts. So I will just say, thank you for trusting us and letting us have fun with it. We enjoyed it, and it was a challenge. But in every challenge, there is growth. So thank you.
Yeah, we were going to say, we weren't going to say somebody else needs to hold a camera. Somebody else needs to hold a camera.
Now, this time, you're on this side of the camera.
I know. I'm starstruck.
Well, no one's smiling, just frowning. You can't see anyway.
We're all smiling.
Does anybody want one with the mask off? Yes or no?
We're good.
You guys good?
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you, thank you.
That went well. Ron?
That's all I have.
And so since we've moved items for council action and discussion, we're going to move into that now. And I have two topics to bring up. And the first one, I'm a little bit nervous to read, so I wrote it down because it's a lot. But let me try and get through it. It's a positive thing. So I have a topic that I would like to discuss with my fellow council members. And my comments have a lot of detail, so please forgive me for reading them. I just don't want to leave anything out, so if you will indulge me, I'll appreciate it. You may, you all may or may not realize, but this year, Ron will celebrate his 20th year as city manager of the city of Palm Beach Gardens. I'm sure that all of you share my hope that he will remain our city manager for many, many years more to come. In light of this very significant milestone, I had an idea. I know what you're thinking, oh, no, Carl's got an idea. I see Mark's face over there. He's kind of got blank on him. But trust, you guys will go with me. I know you trust me, so it's a good thing. Rather than waiting until Ron retires one day, with our city hall renovation nearing completion, I feel that this is the perfect time for the council to consider naming our newly renovated city hall, the Ronald M. Ferris Municipal Complex. If I was you, I'd be thinking, why are you bringing this up now? And why am I just hearing about it? And why are you bringing it up? Well, to answer the first question, it's that normally, the naming of the city facility is handled by the city manager and his staff. However, we all know that Ron would never even consider naming this newly renovated city hall after himself. The second question, I wanted to share this with my fellow council members about my idea, but due to the sunshine law, I could not discuss this with any of you outside a public meeting. So if this was to be a surprise to Ron, it also had to be a surprise to you. It is important to me that you all know that I do not see this as my idea. I brought it up because I honestly believe that my fellow council members would feel the same way about Ron and our city as I do. This is a council decision and action, as it should be. Recognition of Ron's sustained contributions to our city should absolutely come from the five of us as a team and, more importantly, as a family. So why do I think it's appropriate to name our city hall complex after Ron? Here are just a few data points for you to consider. When Ron first arrived in the city as interim city manager, I was just a young snot-nosed cop, and the city was not in the best of shape. It was struggling fiscally. There was no long-term vision. Employee morale and productivity was non-existent. The facilities were poor condition. There was little inventory in terms of parks and fields for our families and children. Our golf course was fiscally a mess, to say the least. And our total, and our total financial reserve was only $700,000. Our city was literally one bad decision away from bankruptcy. Back then, Palm Beach Gardens was largely a bedroom community. That, with the exception of the Gardens Mall, had very little commercial and virtually no corporate headquarters. Ron had his work cut out for him, and I'm sure he knew it. During his 20 years, Ron has spearheaded the transformation of our city into the thriving community that we all love and enjoy today. And may I remind you, the number one city in the state of Florida. While to name every highlight and accomplishment would take several hours, I had staff compile a short list of career highlights, accomplishments, projects, fiscal savings that can be attributed to Ron's leadership. I'm going to start right here. Ron has been in government servant, Ron has been a government servant for over 45 years, a city manager for the last 33. Ron became city manager of Palm Beach Gardens in 2000 and has had 17 council members for his bosses since then. Process improvements and programs. Ron brought engineering in-house, saving over $12 million in 10 years. He took the city attorney's position from a city employee to an outside firm, saving over $3 million in over 12 years. Self-insurance health fund, saving over $16 million since 2008. Ron created our over and over award-winning purchase department, and I'm sure Kumrah is somehow getting an award tonight for something. Ron instituted the hurricane preparedness program after Hurricane Francis and Jean hit only two weeks apart. He created media relations department that made us shine this night. He started economic development initiatives to diversify our tax base. As we still do today, Ron sought out targeted industries in order to maintain a high level of service while maintaining a low tax rate. Back then, new money was needed to infuse into our gardens economy like Cromali, TBC, and more recent UTC, known as the carrier, and the FPL project that's going on today. I was the very first cop that drove over the PGA Bridge when it was finalized many, many years ago. And with the PGA flyover enhancements, without the lighting features that shine brightly every night, and now in concert with the Twin Towers, that bridge would be just simply a bridge. Northcom Regional 911 Dispatch Center now includes six municipalities, model for other agencies to follow. We are the only city in the county that provides regional dispatch for its neighbors. Here's one I didn't, I thought. didn't, I thought was funny. Paperless and digital agenda process saved over 1.1 million since its implementation. Our fire department is dual-credit. It's the only one in Palm Beach County. Public and private partnerships like Cressy Sports and Palm Beach North Athletic Foundation. I'm a big fan, as well as Eric Jablin, the Art in Public Places and Gardens Art Programs to support our culture in the community. As you all know, the recent COVID-19 response programs, Economic Recovery Act currently in Phase III. Here's some fiscal savings and initiatives. In September 2000, the city had less than $700,000 in its reserve. We now brag about it, and we have now over $27 million in our reserves. The city's bond rating has been AAA since 2011. Just a few years ago, the one cent sales tax revenue bond, building for tomorrow, using today's dollar, and look around our city and see what we've done in the last few years. He fought to receive $2 million from FEMA when we were originally denied reimbursement. Ron stabilized the millage so that long-range financial forecasting was possible and predictable. He reduced the depth service millage to zero. Our facilities and enhancements that you see as you came in tonight, our emergency operations center right outside that, right outside that door is category five. Our new operations center, which is the one down by the, by east of the parks, also category five, and will protect our city's fleet and other equipment and investments. You see our city hall renovation, our tennis renovation, new clubhouse and courts, multiple awards. Our golf course renovation and construction of the new clubhouse, also category five. EMS lab, public safety training on Richard Road for canine, police tactical training, state-of-the-art use of force, also category five. Riverside Youth Enrichment Center, Apple accredited childcare facility, peace of mind for the employees and the community. Our Veterans Plaza right outside, Ron is a proud veteran like many of us. The Gardens North District Park, four fire stations, two, three, four, and five, there was only one when I got here, increased our park inventory by 38% since 2010. Not to mention Scripps, Honda Classic, Operation Sister City, and so on. Let me touch on Ron's morale and leadership. Ron has a high employee retention of 17 years. Average for department head, 11 years for other employees. Staff wants to work here and for Ron. Exceptional leaders like Ron excel at visualizing the future and seeing the bigger picture. They are confident without being arrogant or optimistic, and are optimistic. They are able to make decisions setting clear goals necessary to achieve their vision for the future. They innovate and are not afraid to push boundaries like we are pushing forward with mobility. Ron is the man behind the curtain that makes this city's vision reality. It's no accident that year after year, virtually every city department, especially Kumrah, has won numerous awards and accolades. Here are some phrases that his staff feels describes him best. Ron is courageous, tenacious, ethical, innovative, service-oriented, fiscally responsible, prepared, he's a leader, and finally, a friend. He is not only my friend, but he's all of ours, everybody in this room and everybody viewing this evening. So in closing, through Ron's knowledge and experience, which translates into wisdom, Ron exemplifies the definition of a leader, one who motivates a group of people to achieve a common goal. It is Ron's inspiring leadership and relentless pursuit of perfection that has allowed our team and this city to achieve greatness. And I thank you for a moment of your time. I do have comments from supporters, and at this time, I'd like to invite a few community leaders to offer their comments. I've asked them to speak on this topic because it's important for the council and the public to know that we're not only alone, we're not only the only people who support this idea. First, I would like to invite Mr. Steve Matheson to the podium, please. And then Tom Carnes, and then Noel, and then Tony.
Thank you, Mayor Woods.
I'll be brief. And I want to tell you, of all the times that I've appeared before this council, this is probably the one that's given me the most pleasure. I have been, I have been appearing before the city of Palm Beach Gardens Planning Board and City Council for approximately 37 years. About the same time as Mr. Carnes and I were asking the city to believe in the Gardens Mall. And then we built it with the city's support. Through all that time, I have persevered at times, and sometimes enjoyed, working with city administration. I think probably five administrations before Mr. Ferris became our city manager. What an incredible difference, and what a gift we were given. Since he started, since he began building the team that he has, our city has shown itself in the best possible light to our residents, to our businesses, to our competitors, as of other cities seeking business or other, other economic activity. And we've done so because of leadership. And that leadership was not an accident. That leadership was determination. That leadership was fearlessness in the face of adversity. And the word I love to use, and I'm gonna use it tonight, is that leadership was the leadership of a warrior. A warrior who fought for the city of Palm Beach Gardens and continues to do so every day. We've been at this together 20-plus years, and I got to tell you, we've been shoulder to shoulder, and we've been shoulder against shoulder. But in all of those issues, we have worked, and Ron has made sure that we have ended up with a better result, with something that made us proud to be the city of Palm Beach Gardens. And I got to tell you, our firm works from Jacksonville to Miami. We work from West Palm Beach to Naples. There is nothing that compares to the leadership, to the camaraderie, and to the loyalty that the city of Palm Beach Gardens is doing with you. That is because of you, over all these years, building consensus and getting through tough times. And let's face it, we have had some very tough times. We've been in the media, and I've been in this audience when people who, who had a real issue with the city ended up hugging Chief Step, hugging Mr. Ferris, which can be tough sometimes, if you know what I mean. But we did that because he was willing to step forward and to be honest, and to open up and give of himself to do the right thing. And guys, I'm so pleased we're recognizing this now, instead of later, when he's retired and farting around on the golf course. With me, with me, hopefully. Just a couple of quick things. Number one, fiscal management. Number two, bond rating. Number three, employee healthcare services. Number four, employee retention. Natalie, we started at the same time, right? Okay. These are things that are intangible, but that make for continuity. And continuity and stability is what brings business to the city of Palm Beach Gardens. It's what makes the city of Palm Beach Gardens special. I can bring someone into this city hall, and we know that they're going to be treated fairly, they're going to be treated toughly, but the end result is going to be the best result. And we owe that in large part to you, Mr. Ferris, and I can't tell you how much it means every day. That's all I have to say. I urge you to pass this resolution tonight.
Thank you, Steve. Tom Carnes?
Hi. Hey, I don't know what that's all about. I was told this is gonna be a roast.
I was gonna, I was gonna roast him a little bit, but I didn't know it'd go over very well.
You guys are too much. I did, I did write some notes, and now you guys, between the two of you, you said everything.
Sorry.
I mean, I'm, listen.
Feel free to use it.
I'm honored, I'm honored to the opportunity to be here and speak before the council. And to see, I haven't been down here in a few months, to see how the complex is coming together. It looks beautiful.
Yeah.
And I know everyone's working hard on that. And this is, you know, with that, with that coming up to get a CO, I would guess, it looks like a month or two, if your office isn't too elaborate. 20 years. I've been here for, as Steve said, a long time. The first time I came up before the council was, was 35 years ago, presenting the Gardens Mall. And we've been through a lot of city managers, and none as good as, as Ron Ferris. He has really strong leadership abilities, and he recognizes the ability that people have. And he promotes from within where he can, and he hires from without, but he knows who's hiring. He screens the people. And, you know, the presentations usually when I'm up here, I'm, I'm complimenting one of the departments for winning another national or state presentation or something. But, I mean, if you look at Charlotte's presentation tonight, it's terrific. I mean, it's first class. And you, if you looked at that, the people in there, they're all smiling. They're all happy. They all want to stay. Everybody likes working in the gardens. And Ron, and that's, that is due in no small part to, to Ron. He, he teaches people, he teaches them honesty and integrity. He motivates them to do their best to achieve the goals that you, the council, set for him, hand off to him, and say, this is what we'd like you to look at, or this is what we'd like you to do. So, Ron, I've told you before, from up here, you're the best. I know you get some, a lot of help from, from the staff, and they're terrific, too. But congratulations, and I encourage you to go forward with naming the complex after Ron. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Noel? Hi, Noel.
Hello.
How are you?
Great. How are you? Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. It's great to be here. I've been very, very fortunate to work with many leaders all over the county in my role with the chamber, and very few have had the impact that Mr. Ferris has had on the community. Mr. Ferris's strong leadership qualities and what he stands for influences those around him. He's been successful in forming teams and challenging the status quo. Ron is well, is a well-respected, public-facing leader, and all the hard-working city employees are an example of that. The city continues to provide award-winning programs year after year by virtually every city department. Mr. Ferris's visionary thoughts have turned into reality. Under his leadership, the city's provided economic incentives for attracting and maintaining high-quality businesses, and he's been visionary in creating public-private partnerships. A great example of that is the Small Business Relief Fund, a partnership with the PGA Corridor Association in the chamber, that has given $1 million back to the small businesses that needed it most during this pandemic. Mr. Ferris is a communicator of strong beliefs, and he's not afraid to stand up for what is right. He's direct and unfiltered, which has given Ron the ability-
We know that.
We know that. Which has given Ron the ability to complete challenging tasks successfully. In preparing for this, I came across a quote that reminded me of Mr. Ferris. It goes like this. "So leadership is the capability to influence others through inspiration, motivated by passion, generated by vision, produced by conviction, and ignited by a purpose." Miles Monroe. This quote embodies Mr. Ferris's leadership style and who he is as a person. It would be an honor to have the city hall municipal complex named after a leader like him. We do not have to wait for someone to retire to honor their accomplishments. Now's the time to show Mr. Ferris how much we appreciate all he has done for the city over the past 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Tony? How are you? Goodman?
Tony Bedala, president of PPGYI. Everything I'm about to say, I know will be the same sentiment as the executive board that represent the 5,000 families and the 800 volunteers. Around 14 years ago, I moved to Palm Beach Gardens. And when I moved here, I said, what a beautiful, beautiful city. It was, it was the most amazing thing that I've seen driving down PGA. Then 12 years ago, I got involved with the PPGYI. And looking at the people that were involved with the city and working with your staff and the people with the recreation department and so forth, I said, who's behind this? You know, there's gotta be a strong guy behind this, because it's so well-organized. Everything that they did was professional, from Jack to Daniel to Charlotte to everybody, Kumrah. And I said, man, who's the guy behind this? Then I met you, and I fell in love with you. I fell in love with the fact, how honest you are, how direct you are, how direct you are as far as an answer goes. You know, you ask yourself, and you got a straight answer. It wasn't something like when I went to some of these other cities in my, in my business world, where you got an answer, and then maybe that was the answer, maybe that was the final result, not. Well, when we started the process of building these fields, you have city council, you have the staff members, but you were the guy behind it. You were the backbone that guided everybody. And I recognized, I said, man, he sits in that office up there, and he knows the direction. It's almost like you knew the future of everything. And my kids that I represent get to play in the most beautiful fields, the most beautiful complexes, with the most beautiful staff, with the most beautiful workers that you have working there. And that's all because it's testimony to you. And that's what you developed over the 20 years. You know, it's a pleasure. I always said, I'll retire when you retire. And I mean that. And I mean that. And, you know, to have your name on that building now, so I could tell those kids, when they say, who's Ron Ferris? And I'll still be around. I'll, I won't be retired either. Like I said, I retire when you retire. It'll be my pleasure to tell them everything I know about you. Ron, guys, I hope you approve this tonight. It'll be a testimony to a great man, and someone who's been the backbone here for 20 years. Thank you, Mr. Ferris.
Thank you, Tony. I asked the city attorney to draft Resolution 492020, which names the city hall, the Ronald M. Ferris Municipal Complex. At this time, I would like the city attorney to hand out copies of the resolution, and we will place it up on the screen so that Mark and Rochelle can see it. Because the mayor cannot make a motion at this time, oh, hold on. I'm gonna pass the gavel in order to make a motion. So Maria, would you please take the gavel? Thank you very much. I make a motion to add Resolution 492020 to the agenda at this place on the agenda.
I second that motion.
Okay. Do you want me to read the motion?
Create a motion, a second, and a-
Okay. All right, so-
Discussion.
We, we have a motion in a second. So may I call the question? We're not having discussion?
Not at this part. I mean, you can add discussion on this, but you're just adding the resolution to the-
Okay, so in adding the resolution, we've got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye. To add the resolution, then open-
Add the resolution, correct.
Aye.
Okay, now.
Can I, can you, before you continue, can you roll up a little bit so I can see the second half? I just see the first sentence there.
All right, so-
So now I'm gonna make a motion to approve Resolution 492020.
If okay, Chelsea, I'd like to second. Ron, I can't see you. You're off to the corner. Can you come into the middle of your screen? There you are.
We need a second to the motion.
Carl, nice, nice idea, great idea. Ron, you and I have had a number of meetings. I think some of the conversations we've had have been direct, but always honest and straightforward. I can't think of a better person to name the city hall. I know you're probably not really wanting your name on a building. You're pretty humble when it comes to getting some of the spotlight. But, but this is well-deserved. This is your city. You've done great things. It doesn't mean I'm gonna be any easier on you. And I don't think any of us are gonna not, not ask the questions that need to be asked. But you've deserved it. You're a great leader for this city. Honored to be a part of it. And I, I hope that you'll be okay with us. Pass- And I, I hope that you'll be okay with us passing this and putting your name on the building.
So we have a motion and a second. Can we actually read the resolution into the record? Okay, thank you.
Resolution 49-2020, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, honoring Ronald M. Ferris for twenty years of dedicated service to the City of Palm Beach Gardens as the city manager by naming and dedicating City Hall the Ronald M. Ferris Municipal Complex and commending him for his unselfish commitment to municipal leadership, governance, and exemplary public service, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you, Patty. Ironic that we had Ron's agenda, I mean, performance review last month and I still have all the paperwork I had with me that month. And Ron, I'm gonna share a story that, I don't know if anyone else has heard this story, but I'll share it anyway. And if you have, just indulge me. Couple of years ago, we were doing a presentation for the chamber. And we were doing a dry run in the EOC and I did my part of the presentation and Steve Step did another part of the presentation and we had one more gentleman from the city do a presentation and it was really dry. And so Ron gets up in front of us all and he goes, well, what did you think? And I went, it was really dry. And then Ron proceeded to motivate and cheer on staff better than any college coach I've ever heard, better than any preacher I've ever heard. And I went home and I said to my mom, this man, he's the heart and soul here and he, it doesn't, the word is not allow, the word is he, he asks his staff to be better. He asks his staff to think outside of the box. He, he, the staff has the opportunity to really prove that they are, we're all a family and that the city is so important to them and they want to make the city better. And all of this happens because you have somebody at the top that has a vision and, Ron, you have that vision. I mean, it's the same where you, you've now, you know, you're doing our budget for a ten-year forecast instead of five. And for all of you, all of you that can't see Ron's face, he's probably boiling under his skin. He's got a little tiny smirk on his face. But this is a, to say well-earned is an understatement. Around the county, Ron is known as one of the best city managers that we have. And the better part of that is he mentors other city managers and whenever I'm out, that's what I hear, is how, how well-respected, how well-regarded Ron is. And Maria, don't let anything happen to Ron, 'cause we'll take him if you don't want him. And it's like, no, that's not gonna happen. We will have, as long as Ron wants to be here and as long as we have the staff that we have and everybody works in concert the way they do, we have a phenomenal police department and a phenomenal fire department. We have an award-winning procurement department and we have an award-winning accounting department and we have an award-winning leisure services. I mean, if you could see the wall of awards that we have here, why do you think that happens? That happens because you have good leadership. And Ron, I could go on and on and you're giving me the, he's giving me that glance, you know? So with that, I'm gonna invite any of our other council members to say something. Chelsea?
Oh, do, do Rochelle?
No, no, you're right here. You go and then I'll call Rochelle. And then I'll call Mark.
I'm right here. I am the new guy, but I'll tell you what, the moment that I won my election back in March, the calls from council were all about, wait till you work with Ron, because you're about to get mentored like you've never been mentored before and learn things you never could imagine and so far, so good. But I'm also a lot like Ron and there's not a lot of baloney and not a lot of words. We just get the business done and I admire that about you so much. Again, the direct, kind words always are appreciated. So thank you for all of your leadership and for helping me these last few months, which I know have been crazy and you've still taken so much time for me. Thank you.
Rochelle?
Well, we all know that, that Ron, you don't like the spotlight, I'm sure. While this has been wonderful, at the same time, you're, like Maria said, having to deal with being out there. But one word kept coming up over and over again and that's vision. And as Carl said, not only do you make our city vision a reality, but you do drive that vision. And it's kind of amazing when you hear the whole host of things that have happened over the past twenty years because of that vision. And I'm honored to be a part of it, to be part of Ron's team. And there is no I in team and Ron subscribes to that wholeheartedly, but I hope your heart's full tonight with the respect and admiration of us all. I'm glad Carl brought this up. I think this is a great way to honor you.
Mark, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I'm just, you know, when you, when you look around, the team that's put together, that doesn't happen by accident, the staff, his staff, the people that work under his staff, the whole hierarchy from top to bottom, that's how a good organization is run. I try to learn from that and try to bring that to my little business as well. So I do learn from how his team is put together and I think it's why the city is what it is. And everywhere you go, people say, oh, Palm Beach Gardens, what a great place to be. So nope, I think it's great and I think, I hope that you'll be okay with us putting his name on the wall and when he walks by every day with his coffee, you can look at and smile.
Carl, do you have anything to add or are we gonna call the question?
Well, I feel the heat's off of me now, 'cause now all of you gotta share in on it. So Vice Mayor, I'd like to call a question.
All right. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And thank you, Carl.
Ron? Can we, Ron, I'm gonna stand and clap, sorry. Anything you want to say, Ron?
Well, there's plenty I wanna say.
You don't get a vote.
First, I don't believe, Carl, you're ever able to keep a secret, but I guess you should me.
I'm from that building.
But you showed me. And I don't believe that staff was able to keep this from me either. And there'll be a special meeting tomorrow morning, eight-thirty. I'll see you all there. I'm embarrassed, you know, I, this is not my thing. I'm embarrassed. I'm honored, humbled, kind of the words. I'm just searching for words to tell you, I was not expecting anything like this tonight. I was hoping to go home early, but it's very kind of you for bringing this honor to me. For maybe once in my life, a little bit short of knowing what to say. I appreciate the kind accolades, but as always, I will tell you this, I'm only as good as some part of the totals of those people in the audience and those that aren't here tonight that put together the team. And as always, it's always the council too that gives the direction and helps pull this together. Without council and without those men and women out there that have the same aspirations that I do and share the vision that I share with them, and they're the ones that are in the field, they're the boots on the ground. And they make me look good. I wish I could take credit for all the things that you pointed out, but it's the men and women that are a part of this staff in this city that you should really be proud of and you should be naming it after them because they do it on a day-to-day basis out there and, and they know I love them all. And I'm just very proud of them. I'm embarrassed, I don't know what to say, but I'll get even, Carl, somewhere along the line.
Hey, Ron, your wife even knows.
Oh, that was, that was great.
Okay.
So, yeah.
There isn't a damn thing I can do about that, Carl.
So much for keeping secrets.
Yeah. I don't possess the same position of authority there that I do here. Thank you. I really don't know what to say. I'm just overwhelmed and I have a shortage of words other than, but by the help and cooperation and collaboration with council and all those great men and women out there, it's fun. We have a lot of fun doing what we do. And the challenges that we face, and we've had many of them, we're still in one today. It's just amazing how this group comes together and we all pitch in and we get things done. And they'll be the first ones to tell you, like they do every time they're up in front of this group, they will tell you about how the family and the team got together and helped each other accomplish the missions. And as long as we're able to do that and as long as we're able to get things done, I love this city, I love these residents, I love the staff and the council and it's, it's just like a dream come true for the last twenty years with a couple of nightmares, but mostly a dream come true. But I'm living the life and I'm enjoying it. And I can't thank you all enough for this honor and it was very kind of you to come up here. Tony, I'll turn your back, I'm gonna be getting you now on this one. Just kidding. Tony, thank you very much. Everyone else, Tom, Steve, you guys, Noel, appreciate the kind words. And I guess that's, I better stop while I, before I say something I shouldn't, I guess. Or maybe I already have, I don't know. But thank you all very much, I'm honored. Thank you.
Well, you're having a building named after you and that's awesome. So Natalie, I know you were nervous about this, but you know the budget's approved now, so work your magic.
Holy heavens, we have a meeting tomorrow.
We also would like to, the council doesn't need to be involved on, on how you go about the business. I would like to make this fun. So obviously, I would like Ron to be involved in the creativity of this, 'cause you know, we probably want to. It would be nice for, for you guys to share with council ideas and I don't want council to get involved in what size bolts we're gonna use, what script we're gonna use. Just I'd like to be, I would like the council to be a part of it as we move through this. I know we have some ideas that he doesn't know, but that was my final thought on it. So do what you do. All right. Glad that's done. Wow, I was stressed. We have the consent agenda, let me get back on thought.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, five-zero. Yeah, quasi, okay, hold on.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you for everybody stopping by. Okay, you already left. Next, we have public hearings. I am required to read the quasi-judicial. Tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following cases. Ordinance six, 2020, request to rezone and establish PUD with a major conditional use approval. Resolution thirty-four, 2020, request to rezone and establish PUD with a major conditional use approval. Resolution forty, 2020, avenue master signage program. Resolution forty-four, 2020, a site plan amendment to Residence Pod Five, Site Plan Number Two. This means that all city council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are an official city on file of this application and may, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witness who testifies tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff and applicant and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witness's appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to establish, to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer any written comments, please fill out the comment card and give it to the city clerk to my left. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend on offering testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. I do. Patty, would you please read the title?
Ordinance five, 2020, in ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter Seventy-eight Land Development at Section Seventy-eight dash two-two-six, Northlake Boulevard Overlay Zoning District, NBOZ. Zoning Regulations, B, Land Use Chart in Order to Add Self-Service Storage Used to the List of Conditional Uses in the Land Use Chart, Providing that Each and Every Other Section and Subsection of Chapter Seventy-eight Land Development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, Providing a Conflicts Clause, a Severability Clause, and Authority to Codify, Providing an Effective Date and for other purposes.
I'm gonna open the public hearing. Has anything changed since the first reading?
No, sir. There have been no changes since first reading.
Ordinance five and six were combined presentation at, at first reading. Do we need another presentation by anybody, guys?
No.
No? Rochelle, you guys are good?
I'm good.
No, thank you.
Okay. I don't have any cards on this, so I'm gonna close the hearing. Can I get a motion and second to approve, please?
I'll make a motion. We approve?
I'll second.
Bring it back for discussion. Anything, guys?
No discussion.
No discussion.
Hearing, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five-zero.
And just for the record, says the mayor already said, since the presentations for Ordinance five and six were combined, they are considered combined for this as well.
Ordinance six, 2020, Patty, would you please read the title?
Ordinance six, 2020, in ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain real property within the corporate limits of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, consisting of one parcel totaling 1.66, excuse me, 1.66 acres in size, located on the northeast intersection of Interstate Ninety-five and Northlake Boulevard, to be known as the Garden Self-Storage Plan Unit Development, PUD, providing that this parcel of real property, as more particularly described herein, shall be assigned the city zoning designation of Plan Unit Development, PUD, overlay with an underlying zoning designation of general commercial, CG1, providing that the zoning map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, Providing a Conflicts Clause, a Severability Clause, and Authority to Codify, Providing an Effective Date and for other purposes. Resolution thirty-four, 2020, is a companion item to Ordinance six, 2020, and will require council action. Resolution thirty-four, 2020, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, granting site plan and major conditional use approval for seventy-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-six square foot self-storage facility with a one thousand one hundred and twenty-nine square foot accessory office within the Garden Self-Storage Plan Unit Development, PUD. The subject site is approximately 1.66 acres, more or less, located on the northeast intersection, intersection of Interstate Ninety-five and Northlake Boulevard, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing waivers, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
I'm gonna open the public hearing. Any ex parte's on this? I guess I'll start, I haven't spoken to anybody any different than I did the first, on the first reading. So, Mark? No, nobody?
No.
Nope.
Okay. As mentioned above, Ordinance five and six were combined at presentation number one. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? All right. Nope? No cards? Close the hearing. Can I get a motion and second to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, bring it back for discussion. Any discussion, guys?
Nope. I think the only discussion we already had, just it's the best, best bet for that parcel and we're glad they're coming in. I drove by there the other day, it really needs some love, so I'm glad it's gonna look better.
And you're, Chelsea, your comments nailed it on the first reading. I mean, that fits perfect right there and it kinda set the tone, so I appreciate that. Rochelle, how are you? You good? Any comments on this particular issue?
No, I'm good. As I said last time, it's the right project at the, at the right time for, for that spot. And the fact that anything else that goes in on that strip would come before us again, we can always deal with that at that time. So I think it's a beautiful building and it's definitely gonna hook the, the factor on that street, so. building, and it's definitely going to hook the the factor on that street. So I'm good.
All right, Mark, you good?
No comments.
All right, hearing no further discussion on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Clerk has already read the title and resolution thirty four, so I'm going to open hearing on that. Ex parte's are the same, I'm assume. No? Okay, I hear. Okay. No one wishing to speak. I have no cards. Close the hearing. Can I get a motion and second to approve?
I'll make a motion. We approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm going to second. Bring it back for discussion. Same, same. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Non-quasi judicial, ordinance eight, 2020. Patty, would you read the title, please?
Ordinance eight, 2020, in ordinance to the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a text amendment to the city's comprehensive land use plan in the future land use element, transportation element, conservation element, and capital improvements element to provide internal consistency with the city's comprehensive plan, mobility plan, and mobility fee, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes. Note to the public, there is a sign and sheet at the front desk for anyone wanting additional information from the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing on this. Ordinance eight and nine will be a combined presentation but voted on separately with staff presentation. Dawn, thank you.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, city council members. Dawn Sonnenborn with planning and zoning. This is a combined presentation for ordinance eight and ordinance nine. This is for the comprehensive plan amendment and LDR amendments for mobility plan and mobility fee consistency. Ordinance eight is the city initiated comp plan amendment for the text amendments for the future land use, transportation, conservation, and capital improvement elements. And then ordinance nine is also the city initiated request to amend various sections of the LDRs, chapter seventy eight. Again, these are all for consistency with the city's mobility fee and mobility plan. We worked very closely, all staff members worked very closely with our consultants, Andrea Troutman, with Kinder Troutman Consulting, and then with Jonathan Paul with New Urban Concepts on these petitions. Worked very hard. It's a lot of tedious work. Just a little bit of background. We've been working on these types of initiatives since 2016, when we updated our comprehensive plan and did amendments then to establish the process and the framework for the mobility plan and mobility fee. And then ordinance sixteen, 2019, was adoption of the city's mobility plan. That established mobility fee assessment area and the benefit area for all areas east of the Beeline Highway. And then the areas west of Beeline Highway, and it also included Alton, those fall under the traditional concurrency that is run through on the county. Ordinance nineteen, 2019, then amended the LDRs accordingly to incorporate the mobility fees. So the comprehensive plan amendments, and I do apologize, your packages were enormous, but we amended the future land use, the transportation, conservation, and capital improvement elements. And you can see some of the things here. But again, it all was related to just updating it to what the mobility fee and the mobility plan already had in place. And then the LDR amendments, that was that was probably the bulk of the of your package, went through line by line with all of the transportation-related goals, objectives, and policies, and updated all of that. We have a new quality of service terminology now in our in our land development code. And I want to point out with the mobility plan, the blue area that you see here is the mobility fee assessment area, but it also includes Alton because Alton has an existing proportionate fair share. So that will continue under the traditional concurrency with that. And then the areas in pink is the road impact fee assessment areas. And again, that includes Alton, and that's under the traditional concurrency methods that we have had all along. This has been notice, both of them, ordinance eight and ordinance nine, and the paper according to code. We had some coordination and outreach for this process. We issued the I-Park notice on June first. We also shared all of these amendments with our local traffic engineers who work closely with us with petitions that come in. And then we also presented it to the PGA Corridor Association. We did receive a Palm Beach County letter that was dated June ninth. That was a letter of objection. And then the I-Park notice of intent to object by the county was also filed. We received that June twenty second. And as you can see here in the yellow underline, the notice of intent from I-Park requested a meeting by staff to meet with Palm Beach County that was conducted via conference call on July tenth. The Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board, at their June ninth meeting, recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. And staff recommends approval of ordinance eight and ordinance nine, 2019, as presented on first reading. Thank you.
Sorry. I do have one comment card on this. And there's no way I'm going to pronounce your name. I want to say Kershaw.
Perfect.
Is that okay?
Could have been better.
How do we do the how do we do the last?
Mahayodeen.
That's what I would have said.
Just as it is written.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Kershaw Mahayodeen, seven twenty South Sepulveda Avenue, West Palm Beach. I'm representing Palm Beach County Planning Division. I submitted in the faculty PowerPoint presentation, if you can receive and file. The county has, as you heard, submitted a letter of objection for both items regarding the comprehensive plan amendments and the LDR regulations in front of you today. To us, it is yet another illegal attempt to repeal county's transportation concurrency and road impact fee. County's objection is based upon the fact that a municipality cannot unilaterally repeal these laws pursuant to county's charter. Please be clear that we are okay if you you implement these in addition to Palm Beach County's impact fee and traffic performance standards. A brief history, if you want to flip through your PowerPoints really quick. County adopted comp plan and thoroughfare identification map in in nineteen eighty. In nineteen eighty-eight, voters approved road impact fee through charter amendment. And in nineteen ninety, county adopted the traffic performance standard for only for the state and county roads. County uses the TIM map as a base for road and intersection improvements. And we spent about one billion dollars from ninety three to, let's say, twenty nineteen on roadway and intersection improvements. And we also spent about upwards of one hundred and fifty million a year on a comprehensive transit system and only county-wide transit system in this county. Together, our transportation network provides a important lifeline for economic vitality of the city by providing access to and from the city for about ninety eighty-nine percent of the jobs, while only about eleven percent of the residents live and work within the city. County's network also includes, in conclusion, county strongly objects to these amendments. And with the quest that you deny these amendment, we we intend to continue through I-Park objection process and whatever abilities we have, we'll continue on that. But hopefully, it won't get there. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you, sir. I'm going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion and second to approve, please?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Rochelle has a second. Bring it back for discussion. Do you have any discussion on this, guys? We kind of live and breathe this. There's no discussion between us. Any questions for staff?
We've been discussing this for a while.
Yeah. Rochelle, are you good? Mark?
I had a number of questions, but I did ask staff. There was a lot of it was clarification on some of the some of the definitions of some of the designations for assigning roads, et cetera. So, you know, as a city, we we decided we wanted to move forward with the mobility plan and mobility fee. This is basically cleaning up the language in our comprehensive plan, which has to happen in order for us to implement that mobility plan and mobility fee. Obviously, I'm very comfortable with our city's position and and feel this is the right thing for our city and for our region. So I want to thank the staff for all the time that they spent putting all this together. I also want to thank them for helping me fall asleep a couple of times, reading all of it. But it was it was very educational for me. But I think it was very complete. And and as a result, I'm 100% supportive.
Understood. Rochelle?
No, I agree with Mark. I've been looking at other cities across the country that have been doing similar things. And it's amazing how a few words can 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 bring us almost out of the dark ages into the future. And and that's what these changes do for the city of Palm Beach Gardens. Again, it's visionary, it's thinking ahead, and I'm I'm fine with it.
Chelsea?
A big fan of mobility. I voted yes on this when I was on zoning. I'm proud to be here now to see it through. And I will see this through.
Maria?
Well, I'm not going to put my transportation hat on for the moment.
No, let's not.
I just think this is a, you know, like everything else, we have we have glitch lists that we constantly are updating to make sure we're in accord and in in compliance. And this is just another one of those lists. So thank you for it's a lot of work. And I can't wait to hear Patty read the title, so.
Hearing no further discussion. Can I get a vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Ordinance nine, 2020. Patty, would you please read the title? I'm going to order a pizza. I'll be back in a half hour.
Send in the dancing girls.
Ordinance nine, 2020, in ordinance to the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending chapter seventy eight land development regulations at section seventy eight dash forty-four concurrent processing by adopting new subsection B one D, further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash forty-six application procedures, by repealing subsection D one F and E four A, and readopting same as revised, and by amending subsections E seven and E seven F, further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash fifty-two conditional uses, by repealing subsections D four A and D four C, and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash sixty-one effective period of development orders and enforcement of conditions by repealing subsections C three, C four, C five, D, G, two A, G two B, G two C, and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash seventy-five adopted levels of service by repealing subsections A and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash eighty required application material by repealing subsections A, A three A, and A ten, and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash eighty-six proportionate fair share program by repealing the title and readopting same as revised. By repealing subsections A, B, and C, and readopting same as revised. By repealing subsections C one, C two, C three, C four, and subsections D through I in their entirety. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash one fifty-nine permitted uses, minor and major conditional uses and prohibited uses by repealing subsection F and subsection J at notes forty four one F, forty four point two F, forty nine A, fifty seven G six, and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at article five supplementary district regulations at division eleven traffic performance standards by repealing the title and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash six one one intent by repealing section seventy eight dash six one one and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash six one two applicability by repealing subsection A and readopting same as revised. By repealing subsections B one, B two, B three, and readopting same as revised. By repealing subsection B four in its entirety by repealing subsections C one, C two, and C three, and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash six two one established by repealing subsections A and B and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash six two two level of service standards by repealing table forty four with notes and readopting same as revised. By adopting new table forty four A with note, further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash six two three link standard by repealing subsections A and B and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash six two four intersection standard by repealing subsections A and B and readopting same as revised. By repealing subsection C in its entirety. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash six two five radius of development influence by repealing section seventy eight dash six two five and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash six two six phasing by repealing section seventy eight dash six two six and readopting same as revised. By repealing subsection C, D, and E and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash six two seven reliance on committed roadway improvements by repealing the title and readopting same as revised. By repealing subsections A, B, B one, and B two, and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at subdivision three traffic impact studies by repealing the title and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash six forty one submission required for development approval by repealing section seventy eight dash six forty one and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash six forty two scope by repealing section seventy eight dash six forty two and readopting same as revised. By repealing subsections A, B, and C, and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash six four three methodology by repealing subsections A, B, D, E, F, F two, G one, H one, H two, J one, J two, J three, K, L, L two, and M, and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash six four four site-related improvements by repealing section seventy eight dash six four four and readopting same with a new title and as revised. Further amending chapter seventy eight at section seventy eight dash seven fifty one definitions by repealing the definitions for average annual daily traffic, committed roadway improvements, concurrency, existing peak hour traffic, existing traffic, historical traffic growth table, performance surety, radius of development influence, road agreement, and total traffic, and readopting same as revised. By repealing the definitions for major project By repealing the definitions for major project, major project map, and off-peak season in their entirety, and by adopting new definitions for multimodal, quality of service standard, and peak hour directional traffic volume, provided that each and every other section and subsection of chapter seventy-eight land development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Fell asleep. Okay, so, we're going to open the hearing. Ordinance nine has already been presented. Kershaw, do we put you on the record for saying, repeating what you said?
Would you like us to incorporate your comments into ordinance nine?
Would you like to read the comments into this as well?
No, the same comments.
Same comments.
Okay, for the record, we'll incorporate your comments into ordinance nine as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kershaw. All right, so then, we're going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance nine.
Thank you, Mark.
I'll second.
Maria's got the second. Bring it back for discussion. Any discussion?
I think the reading was long enough.
Right on. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Resolution forty, twenty, twenty. Patty, would you please read the title?
Resolution forty, two thousand and twenty. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a master signage program for the Avenir Plan Community Development, PCD, that includes design criteria for residential pod entry signs, non-residential ground signs, and other various community signs. The Avenir PCD is generally located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, east of Grapeview Boulevard, west of Bay Hill Drive, and south of Beeline Highway, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Mr. Mayor?
Hello. Hold on.
Yes, sir.
We hear you.
I'm going to open the hearing and declare any expertises. I have none.
None. None.
Mark, Rochelle, we can't see you because the presentation's on the screen.
I have no expertise other than just driving through the community.
Right on. Rochelle? Rochelle? Is she gone? Eric?
I have none. Yeah, I was muted. Sorry. I didn't think I was. Yeah, no expertises.
There you go. Who's that? Hi, Ken.
Hello, Mayor Woods.
How are you?
Good evening. Hopefully you can hear me okay.
All right, so we got a petitioner presentation since we have no expertises. Ken, can you give us your abbreviated version on this, please? Have you been sworn in?
Mr. Mayor, hopefully you can hear me okay. This is Ken Tuma.
Ken, we need to know if you've been sworn in, name and record for the title.
Yes, sir. I have been sworn in. My name is Ken Tuma. My address is six ten Clemata Street, West Palm Beach, and I have been sworn in, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
With your permission, I'll begin.
Please.
Thank you. So, good evening. Ken Tuma here again on behalf of Avenir. What is in front of you this evening is a master signage program. I have about five or six slides that go through the master signage program for the site. The purpose and intent of this application is to allow for consistency throughout Avenir. As you know, this project will continue on for the next twenty to thirty years, and the goal of the development team is to make sure that there's some consistency in all of the main features from a signage standpoint, but also to allow for a lot of creativity. So, basically, the package, as you'll see going through it, is requiring certain elements, establishing height and width restrictions, but also allowing the individual home builders who will come before you or other uses, potentially even in the future, property owner associations to allow for flexibility, so they have the ability to change, but there are some guidelines to move forward through the project. I know all of you are familiar with Avenir. If you haven't been out there in a while, it's worth going out again and taking a look at. A lot is changing every day on the project. The main entry features are about ninety-nine percent complete, and there is a significant amount of construction continuing on, including the beginning of the clubhouse has started in the middle of the site. So, the signage program itself, it's broken up into four or five sections. There are the PCD entry features, the PCD wayfinding features, the residential pod entry features. There are also non-residential pod features, recreation uses and ground signs, and street namings and signs, and then also traffic control or the regulatory signage. We are required as part of the initial development order to come before you for this package. The entry features. You have already approved one of the entry features located here at Avenir Drive and Northlake Boulevard. The balance of the project of the entry features will be consistent with that initial entry. There'll be a requirement to have Ulite stone. There'll be a requirement to have the maximum height of thirty-eight feet, which is consistent with the entry feature that's there today. There'll also be, the approval will be required to be in front of you again as a site plan approval. So, for tonight, all you're doing is saying, hey, these are the guardrails for these entry features, but will be required to come before you as they move through the process. This is just a quick view of the existing entry feature. You can see the construction and the quality that's being built, including Ulite, which is going to be a consistent design theme throughout all of Avenir. You'll hear me mention the word Ulite. It is a Florida natural stone that is going to be the main thing for Avenir. PCD wayfinding signs. Avenir is a big project. The roadways in Avenir, if you go down Avenir Drive to Coconut, it's almost two miles long. So, throughout the community, we have strategically placed working with your staff, or will strategically placed working with your staff wayfinding signs. And the wayfinding signs are six feet high, four feet wide, and they'll identify critical points, mostly at intersections within the road right-of-ways and the median. Find where you turn and how you go to different areas. So, for example, on the screen in front of you, to the right will be the city park and the town center, and the idea is to create a sense of arrival, so you know when to turn. Those signs will be made out of aluminum. They'll be built in the Avenir blue. You'll note the detail, the landscaping in the front of them, and then also in the rear, and then, of course, the Avenir identifier. These are the only, whoops, these will be the only signs that you'll see tonight that are specifically designed as part of this approval. All the other ones are more constraint-oriented. The residential entry features. You have already approved three of these entry features through the project, and this will put the guidelines in place for the rest of them. The key things of the entry features that will be required will be requirement of a name, the use of Ulite stone, there'll have to be consistent landscaping, there'll be a height limitation of twenty feet. It must be within the coastal color palette, coastal color palettes, including whites, yellows, blues, and grays. So, this basically sets up the rules of the road for the future entry features. Non-residential entry features. Primarily, this will be the town center district. This is just a conceptual design. Doesn't necessarily mean the sign will look like this, but it's setting up the rules for those non-residential signs. We have the maximum width of fifteen feet, the maximum height of ten feet, have to have the parcel name, have to use the Avenir logo, must have some Ulite stone, and the landscaping must be consistent with the balance of the project. Again, coastal color palettes only. Cultural, institutional, and recreational uses of ground signs. These are, for example, the Avenir Clubhouse. This is a sign that you actually already approved. Again, setting the standards, maximum width, maximum height, the use of the signage, the parcel address, requirement of the Ulite stone, consistent landscaping, and coastal palettes. Street signs. The regulatory signs within Avenir will have a design element. The poles will be a square aluminum pole, and then there are blue blade signs which will be made out of aluminum, and you'll see the Avenir detail on the signs. The idea of those signage is to reinforce a sense of place within the Avenir community. And then finally, the very exciting regulatory signs. These signs will have a very unique design. They'll be that square black pole that we discussed before, aluminum, and then each one of the signs will have, each one of the signs will have a backing panel all the way around with a small border. You can see the yield sign, again, just to create a sense of arrival at Avenir, and the back of those signs will actually be black and closed throughout the sign. And in short, that is the master signage program for Avenir. We are not requesting any waivers. The Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval. Your staff has worked with us diligently through this project, and they are recommending approval. We look forward to your questions and approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Brett, do we have any, do you have a presentation on this, or are you just?
No, Mayor. Ken covered it all.
All right, so I'm going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion we approve.
I'll make the second. Bring it back for discussion. Anybody getting questions of Ken or anybody?
It looks great. I mean, there's consistency, and that's what we need, and I drove out there last week, and it's, you know, it's looking great. I mean, sat in one of the, under one of those Ulite stone towers there and just looked at all the vegetation, and it really looks good.
Yeah, I agree. Chelsea?
I just like how consistent it is, but still allows for flexibility for the future since this will be happening for decades after this moment.
For sure.
So, and a lot can change in that time, so we do need to allow for that. But aside from that, the consistency, everything from having an Avenir blue pantone, I didn't realize that. Very cool.
Rochelle, I cannot see you.
No, I.
Ken, can you stop the share?
Problem. I agree that it allows for some individuality, and the Avenir blue is a great color. That's my color this year, so.
Right on. Mark?
I have no comments. It looks fine to me. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome. Thank you.
All right, hearing no further discussion. Can I tap a vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Have a great evening.
Thank you, Ken. Resolution forty-four, twenty, twenty. Patty, could you please read the title on that?
Resolution forty-four, two thousand and twenty. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a site plan amendment to approve an entry feature with guardhouse, architectural, floor plans, and elevations, typical lot landscaping, and a model home and sales center for regency at Avenir, residential pod five, site plan number two, within the Avenir Plan Community Development, PCD, that is generally located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, east of Grapeview Boulevard, west of Bay Hill Drive, and south of Beeline Highway, as more particularly described herein, providing an effective date and further purposes.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Any expertises on this? I have none.
None.
Nope.
Nope.
Do we have a petitioner presentation?
Good morning, Council.
Hi, Nicole.
Good morning.
We see you now.
It's been a long day.
Nicole, hey, Nicole, have you been sworn in?
With Cotler and Herring. I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
Tonight, we are presenting to you Pod Five Regency at Avenir, and the request is just a very simple request. You've already previously approved a Pod Five site plan, but the request itself is just to look at the architecture for the community and to enhance the entry plan as well. We do have our project team viewing live, but here online tonight, you have myself and you have Fred Feister from Toll Brothers. Toll Brothers is our applicant. We have two sets of architects for the design. The landscape architects and land planners are Cotler and Herring, and also Grant Wieland Design Landscape Architecture, and we have Balby and Associates as our civil engineer. And as I mentioned earlier, it's just a very simple request for enhanced entry feature for the entry to the community, including signage. We have ten models with typical landscape and a model and sales center. I know that you're very familiar with the location of Avenir, so I'm actually going to kind of flip ahead of that slide. The location of Pod Five within Avenir is highlighted on your screen. Pod Five has four hundred and sixty-nine age-restricted dwelling units. They are comprised of fifty-foot lots and sixty-foot lots. The entry itself was completely redesigned and upgraded from the original approval by the landscape architects at Grant Wieland's office. They really took an intentional approach with the hardscape design, the landscape design, and the architects came in and completely designed a very intentional guardhouse. The hardscape includes the high-quality pavers that you see in this rendering. We also included signage and fountains. There are multiple basins within these fountain graphics of water with stepstone, travertine cladding, and Ulite stone features. As Ken mentioned in the previous presentation, Ulite is a Florida natural stone, and it's very prominent within the Avenir community, and we've also incorporated that within our entry features. The entry landscape is, it includes very grand entry with the date palms towards the front. When you drive in, you've got the date palms in the middle, you've got the date palms on the sides. Off to the sides as well, you have the Montgomery palm bosts, and then closer to the edges, to the screening of the residents on both sides, you do have very full live oak trees and sable palms. Taking a look at the materials of the guardhouse, it was designed by Randall Stoff's office. It features the Florida Ulite stone, as you can see, within the main material. It also includes painted wood beams, brackets, and stucco siding panels. Now, the community itself, as I mentioned, was broken up into the fifty-foot and sixty-foot lots, and what Toll Brothers has done is they've broken them into two different collections that retained each of the size lots. You have the palm collection and the Tradewinds collection. Within both of those collections, potential homebuyers will have the option to choose five different models within each of those collections, and within each of those, they have four different elevation styles, vocover tone, transitional, coastal, and contemporary. So, that's ten model homes with four different elevations, forty different possible elevations, twenty per collection. One of the really important things that we've taken a look here, and we've done with other communities, especially within Avenir, is to look at the diversity. We want to make sure that the product that we're providing within the community is diverse and provides some great architectural massing and interest. So, we were able to work with staff to provide architectural interests and upgraded elevations, not only on the side elevations that sit directly next to open space parcels and public in some of the right-of-way streets within the community, but also to the rear as well. You have some of these lakefront lots, and all of these have upgraded rear architectures. So, we paid special attention to that with the architectural details. We've counted three hundred and fifteen lots out of the four sixty-nine, and that's sixty-seven percent of the lots within the community that have some sort of upgraded elevation, whether it's a side elevation, a rear elevation, and some of them even have boats. And we're going to take a quick look at the model center that we have proposed for the community. It's going to be located right here, and I'm going to zoom in so that you can see it a little bit better. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to see where it sat on the property. Homebuyers that are going to come into the community are going to go through the main entrance, and then they're going to go immediate to the right and park in the temporary parking area. The nice thing about this design is that the vehicles that come in will turn around and go directly back out, so there's no vehicle circulation throughout the community which may conflict with any of the construction that's going on. In the blue, I've noted the pedestrian circulation. Once a buyer comes into the community and they park, they're able to just circle around the model home area. It's completely trapped in with fencing, so again, it helps direct the buyer from home to home, and they can see all of them. Within these different collections, we came up with a couple of 3D renderings, just to give you an idea of the style, the material, the colors. So, I'm going to show you two. So I'm going to show you two slides. This is a representation of the palm collection and as you remember, it's the fifty-foot lots. Those homes range from just under nineteen hundred square feet to just over twenty-four hundred square feet under air. And these are some of the different style representations. And they completely and accurately represent the typical lot landscaping, the materials, the colors and the differences between the homes. The Tradewinds collection, again, to give you an idea of what the different homes are that we are looking at. As you can see, some of them are front-loaded garages on the larger sixty-foot lots. And three of the models actually do have a sideload garage on the sixty-foot models as well. These homes range from just over twenty-five hundred square feet to just over twenty-eight hundred square feet. And to wrap everything up, we did design typical lot landscaping for each of the models. Don Herring hand-designed every single one of these. There's one for every model and it includes enhanced landscape architecture and enhanced elevations as well. We were able to work with staff and planning and zoning board to make sure to meet all the requirements and make sure that it was appropriately designed for the needs of the community. And we feel very confident with the designs that we came up with for each of these. Thank you so much for your time. And as I mentioned, both myself and Fred are here on the line, so if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. Do we have a staff presentation on this, Joanne?
No presentation. Nicole covered it.
Okay, I have no cards on this. So I'm going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion in a second for approval, please?
I'll make a motion we approve, resolution forty-four.
I'll second that motion.
Chelsea's second. Bring it back for discussion. Any thoughts? Anything on this guy? We kind of lived this stuff a little bit.
I like the transitional style myself.
I like that too.
I like the coastal. I don't know, you guys.
That's why there's more than one style, right?
Chelsea's motion in a coastal.
I'm with Chelsea on that one.
Rochelle, Mark, what do you like?
I like all of them.
We all like the Ululite.
I did have a question though. I mean, it looks great and it fits the, 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 the character of, of Avenir as a whole. Toll Brothers, you guys always have nice products that, you know, that's going to make the area look what it's supposed to look like. So thanks for that. Two questions real quick, and I don't know if you have answers for them. What are the proposed home prices and any HOA fees? I know there's a gated, there's a clubhouse within this community that's specific for this, 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 this pod. Do you know an estimate what the HOA fees are going to be and what the home prices may be starting at?
Right, yes. The home prices right now are starting at below five hundreds through the mid-six-fifties. And Fred, I know you're on the line, do you have an idea on the homeowner's question?
Fred's on mute?
Yeah, hi, good evening. Fred Fister, Toll Brothers, nine fifty-one, Broken Sound Boulevard. I have been sworn in. Yeah, so the estimated HOA fee within A five for the active adult that's going to have its own clubhouse is about three hundred and fifty dollars per month just for the HOA fee.
That would be maintenance and all the works that goes with it.
That's correct.
Okay. And will these, will these folks have access to the main clubhouse in Avenir as well? Or are they restricted to just this one? Not that they're going to want to go over there, but in case they wanted to.
So it, it's designed to have its own separate amenity. Current design, which will be before you here shortly, it's still going through P and Z process, is approximately twenty-four thousand square feet. So it's very substantial. They will have all the creature comforts that they desire within the community itself.
And will each home have the option to put a pool in the back? Or are they, or the yard's going to be available to do that? Okay.
Yes, they will.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've designed each of the landscape for the typical lots for optional pools as well.
All right, I think that's going to be it. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, Fred.
I've got one question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rochelle.
Being that Avenir is a golf community and we've got all these lovely golf cart paths going everywhere, the garage looked like it was a typical two-car garage. Is there accommodation for golf cart parking in the garage?
That's a great question, Rochelle. There are, I counted, there are four, four of the models, two within the sixty-foot lots and two within the fifty-foot lots that have garages with almost like a faux tandem type space where it's not enough space to put a car, but there's probably enough space to put a golf cart. So that could be accommodated. And also with the clubhouse design that Fred and I are working on, there's going to be, we're looking to put in golf cart parking to try to stay consistent with that theme.
Thank you.
All right, so I've closed the hearing. We have a motion in this second and I hear no further discussion, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five zero. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're all good.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Fred.
All right, resolution thirty, twenty twenty. Patty, would you please read the title?
Resolution thirty-two thousand and twenty. Resolution, the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a proposed maximum millage rate for the City of Palm Beach Gardens for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, setting the date, time and place of the first budget hearing, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Alan, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I do have a very brief presentation. I am Zoom challenged, so I'm looking to Eric right now to help me.
That's why you're here.
Resolution thirty, Eric? I got it, okay. Oh, okay. Luckily, it's a very short presentation, okay.
Because I got an over and under, under with the chief, nine o'clock.
No, I don't think we're going to make a call.
I know. I did the over.
Oh, okay, well, you won then.
All right.
Okay. All right, so how do I kick it in gear, Eric? Where's my?
Here, I'll get it out.
Okay. Oh, here we go, I see you, never mind. You got it?
You got it.
Okay. Again, as I said, very brief presentation. Again, Alan Owens with the Finance Department. The purpose of resolution thirty is, is very short. It's just twofold. Basically, this is the first step in the process of adopting each year's annual budget. The first part is to set the maximum millage rate going into the budget hearings and also to set the date and time of the first public hearing. And basically, staff is proposing that we keep the millage rate at the same, five point five five. Again, there's no debt service millage and it is the same millage as this year. The rollback rate is calculated at five point four-two-five-four. Again, what that rate, the rollback rate is, that's the rate that would generate the same revenue as last year's dollars, with the exception of dollars from new construction. And that rate is two point three percent. The five point five five is two point three percent above the rollback rate. Again, those rates can be lowered during the public hearings, but not raised. Actually, it could be, but it's a very difficult process. So practically speaking, they cannot be raised during the public hearing process. The second part of this action requires the, us, the city, to notify the county of the date, time and place of the first public hearing. Those dates cannot conflict with dates that are held for the school board and the Palm Beach County budget hearings. And those dates in September are the third, the ninth and the fifteenth. So staff is recommending the first public hearing be held on September tenth, two thousand and twenty. And so with that, staff is recommending approval of resolution thirty, twenty twenty, which sets the maximum operating millage at five point five five and setting the date and time for the first public hearing on September tenth at seven PM in the City Council chambers. One other quick note, tomorrow morning, we will be sending out a link to you all and the Budget Oversight Review Board with a link to the detailed line item budget. We just finished putting all the files into PDF format today, actually. So it's all ready to go. First thing in the morning that will go out and also be put on the website, made available to the public at that time. So with that, I'll entertain any questions?
All right, so with that, can I get a motion in a second to approve?
I'll make a motion.
You got a second?
I'll second.
Rochelle's got the second. Bring it back for discussion. Out of respect for Chelsea, her first budget, it's difficult. You want to listen a little bit or you want to?
I'll listen first, I have some questions.
Start with you, Mark.
Well, this is just a formality, basically, getting the maximum millage set. So obviously supportive of that. Alan, you and I had a short talk the other night, or the other day, during my agenda review about potential impacts on city business tax collections, given the COVID era. That doesn't impact this year's budget, but it would impact next year's budget. Do you have any comment or thought? Any anticipation on anything?
Not to go into great detail tonight. Again, as we mentioned in our brief talk, Mark, it, all of our discussion is, is contained in the transmittal memo that summarizes next year's budget. So there is a section that talks about COVID and how we're dealing with it. And obviously, we look forward to discussing in detail at a later time with each of the council members, how we're addressing it. But I think it's pretty well laid out in the budget transmittal memo, so.
Okay, I'll wait for that, thank you.
Rochelle?
I had the same discussion with Alan and got the same answer at my agenda review, so I will wait for the memo.
Right on. Maria?
Alan, just for, to remind people, what, what has been our actual millage rate over the last five years? Because I know we've been coming down every year for the last five. So just, do you have that off the top of your head?
Not off the top of my head. I know last year was the first year we reduced, we eliminated that service millage. We were at five point six zero zero three, I think, and then we're down to five point five five. But it has been gradually coming down over the last several years, actually. It's keep the operating rate flat and the debt millage came down.
And I know because, you know, people look at their tax bills and they say, my taxes went up. But in, in actuality, when they're looking at their tax bill, it's that the amount that they have to pay goes up because the value of their homes go up. It's not because the City of Palm Beach Gardens has raised the millage rate because we've actually lowered the millage rate every year since I've been on council. So it's just a, a small reminder, a shout out to those that are listening, that if you're, if you are paying more in taxes, it is because the value of your home has gone up. And we're thankful that, what did the property appraiser send us? Thirteen billion this year?
A little over thirteen billion.
Yes, so that's, that's just a reminder to everyone listening.
Right.
Excellent comment as well, Maria. Chelsea, you have anything to say?
No, I've been actually listening to the Budget Review Board when they've been meeting, so I'm trying to catch up a little bit. And, you know, we're lucky that we live in an area with that the taxable values are high, so we're able to keep a lower millage rate, which is something people need to understand. So I'm glad Maria mentioned what she did and I'm excited to, to work on the budget soon.
Well, I know going forward, the way Alan presents the budget, it, it, you know, how convoluted and forensic it could be, but the way he presented it to us, it's, it's seamless and it's an awesome presentation. And we have no idea what the COVID is going to do to our taxable value and our home values next year. So, you know, we've had this ten-year plan and it just, this is a perfect time to, the steady as she goes and staying on course really will hopefully reflect in our, you know, in, in the money that we have next year, because very likely, our values of our homes are going to drop, which is also obviously going to affect the city's gains. But I really have nothing. I'm anxious to see the, the final presentation of the budget. You do an excellent job every year and I appreciate your hard work. I appreciate you spending time with me, a little extra time at the agenda review. And I think, I'm hearing no further discussion? So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five zero. Okay, so we're not, that's it, right? Yeah. We're not done, because I said at the beginning, for items for council action discussion, I said I had two. You know, and I got, we all got tied up in the naming the city complex after Ron. I've had many, many people in business and actually in the civil community contact me because they think seven o'clock is too late to have the meeting. And there's a, there's just a gap in time between five-thirty and seven. The business people are waiting longer. Here, for perfect example, it's nine-ten now. And I would like to bring it up for discussion. I had, I asked Ron and Max if we could pull the resolution slash ordinance, I think it's twofold, if there's a way we can either repeal one of them or if we can change it. But I wanted to bring it up for vote and discussion here for business purposes. Can we move this stuff to six, y'all?
I'm happy to chime in on that because ironically, after we had our special meeting and we started at six and we got out and it was still daylight, I turned to Ron and I said, Ron, we need to start our meetings at six o'clock. So Carl, this is a great idea and I am all in favor.
And that, and just so you know, that, the, the start time in the meetings was established by resolution, so that's not, that, that's a motion and a vote, if you wish to change it.
Okay, but the, there's an ordinance that, that puts us till eleven-thirty, right?
Right, that was adopted by the council that established that you're high water, as late as you would go. It called a deadline, it was a hard deadline for your meeting. And, and we can bring that back and revisit that at another meeting if it's the desire of the council.
Mark, can I have your thoughts on this? Because you're a business guy, you're working, you know.
I don't have a, a real, I don't really have much of an opinion one way or the other. I mean, starting earlier is fine. I mean, one of the thoughts we had earlier was trying to move some of the council discussion to the end of the meeting so the business community or those that are, any of the applicants can get in and, and get out. But it still seems to take quite a while before we get our presentations done. And the, the presentations are important. I think it's important that the community knows what, what the city is doing, what the staff is doing. City manager report's always very important for the, for the residents to know. And, you know, what we're doing out there, I think, is important as well. But that just takes time. I mean, it takes at least an hour before we even get to the agenda. If we know we have a lot of, I mean, we can either set a policy and start every meeting at six, which I'm comfortable with, you know, on the way home, but, you know, you can stop in and, and do the meeting. We could also just, I don't know if it's wise to change it. I think you want to keep it the same consistently. So I don't know if the city manager or attorney or anyone else has any thoughts on, you know, I, I would assume we'd want to keep it the same time every, every month unless there's a special meeting, but.
No, that's what the discussion is.
Do you have a thought on that, Ron, Max?
I, I believe that that is the intent or the, or the discussion is, would be to change our formal meeting times to now move from seven to six PM for the future.
Have we had any comment from any of the business community, any of the applicants that come in? I mean, it's right in the middle of dinnertime, so I'm not sure if some people like to go home and, and grab a bite before they start the meeting. I, I don't know, I'm just throwing out.
Well, I want to, I just want to remind you, this is one day of the month. It's one day and one hour. And I think the business community would rather get home to their families a little bit earlier. And yes, I did have a call today, as a matter of fact, from one of our present, presenters this evening, who specifically asked that question to bring it up, to bring it up in the future. And I felt there was no reason to, to bring it up later. It's a simple resolution, it's easy to fix. We, at least three of us need to agree that we can change a few minutes of our day, one day a month. Because I find myself, you know, if I'm done by five, you know, it's basically two hours before, you know, when we can just flow right into a six o'clock meeting. So that's how I feel about it. So Chelsea, how do you feel about it?
Well, being on zoning for a while, we met at six. So actually, the first time I came here for, you know, my real job, I thought it was at six. So consistency-wise, that's when the other, other evening boards are meeting. I'm not sure of all of them, but that, I know zoning started at six and I don't see any reason why we wouldn't. Yeah, there's parks and recs also at six PM.
Rochelle, thoughts?
I have no problem changing it. There, there's-
Excellent.
No, no reason that I could give that would make a difference to me really, so.
Agreed. And again, it's one day a month for one hour. That's all we're, we're, we're changing. And really, I think it's an antiquated idea from, I don't even know how many years ago, to let people go home and eat and do whatever they got to do. I mean, you know, there's, there's people, if they want to go home and eat, they can flip up the screen and pull up the city council meeting too.
Carl? I was just going to ask that question. How is it for staff? Does Ron have feelings on, on, on what staff? Would it be a long day for that?
We're getting thumbs up from the audience. Should we turn the screen around, Rochelle, so you can see everybody with their thumbs up?
If I may speak for staff.
All right, so we're not going to make this a big deal, but Ron, if you have any-
Yeah, the, the staff, you know, they're new, normally, their day ends around five o'clock. A lot of them stay a bit later, but they have, you know, sort of like continue to work.
A lot of them stay a bit later, but they have, you know, sort of like continue to work or have dead time from five to seven. So it would, would give them an opportunity to get an earlier start and get home earlier, hopefully, to their families. So I think staff could be supportive of that. Do I see any head nods or, yeah, guy, staff is good for that. You know, and it provides more consistency for staff just to shoot right on through. We're always prepared and you're always here early anyway, so we just might as well get started with the city's business. And that's what we like to do. We like to conduct our business, so.
All right, so we're gonna be more productive for that downtime between five and seven. So do we really wanna talk about it or we can just have Max draw up a resolution and we'll vote on it?
You can make a motion and a vote.
You can do it by motion right now.
I'll make a motion that we change our meeting time to start at six o'clock.
I'll second your motion.
Chelsea on a second, and then this is gonna start August meeting, guys? I'll probably show up at 6:30.
We'll start without you.
They'll start without me. Wait, I'll just be on the phone. All right, so hearing no further discussion on this particular topic, sorry, I forgot about it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Resolution carries, 6:00 PM it is. That's it, guys, anything? Oh, city, then we have a city attorney?
I can, very briefly, there's nothing really earth-shattering going on right now. We have, we have three litigation matters right now. The most recent series lawsuit, as you know, we're, we're in discovery and we're, we're dealing with that at the moment. And we're engaging in various forms of motion practice as we move closer and closer to a trial. The Rustic Lakes Annexation Challenge is still hanging out, out there, an aspect of it. It, I still feel the same way about it as I did before. I believe that it's basically frivolous and that nothing's gonna come of it. It's just that because of COVID, the courts have slowed way, slowed way down and it requires a specially set hearing and we'll be moving forward here probably on it within the next 30 to 45 days. And the, the lawsuit that the tax collector brought against us for her parcel over on PJ Boulevard, we have to file our responsive pleading in that tomorrow and we'll do so. That's it.
All right, guys, I'm ready to adjourn.
Wait, hold on a second. Before you go.
I'm not gonna shut anybody off.
Resolution 42, that was in our consent today, move the September meetings. Does that have to edit? Does it specify seven o'clock PM in those resolutions or does it matter that we just change everything else to six?
It's a resolution, ordinance would, would, would have two readings, a resolution.
Right, but.
Sorry, Max.
No, it's okay, the resolution.
You know, Resolution 42 and consent, it moved the September meetings. Did it, I don't have it online, does it specify seven o'clock start? And if so, do we have to do anything to change that, to change it to six?
It does specify, specify seven o'clock start, but the motion and the vote that you took this evening to change all your future meetings to 6:00 PM will override that, so it's just another resolution and a motion, all a resolution is, is a written motion. So that's a very good question and it's not an issue. The motion and the vote that you guys just took will supersede that. So those meetings, all future meetings will begin at 6:00 PM. And they will be advertised accordingly.
And we'll complete the circle.
Okay, thank you.
But it's a very good question.
Good question. All right, I'm not gonna.
Ron, have a nice vacation.
Yes, enjoy.
Oh, yeah, that's right, Ron's gonna.
Thank you, I'm gonna be leaving in the morning. You all, you all embarrassed me enough here, I think. Thank you all very much. Again, I'm sort of stuck for words. I'm very touched, thank you.
All right, I'm ready to adjourn, but I'm not gonna shut, because we got everybody on screen. You guys ready to go home?
Yes, sir.
Rochelle, Mark, Mark, I know you're in Tampaville.
Yep, I'm heading downstairs to somewhere more fun than my room.
I saw a red solo cup. I saw a red solo cup in there somewhere. All right, everybody, meeting adjourned.